Hi, it's time called order the regular meeting of McAllister City Council Tuesday, February 11th. We do have a quorum and we have Roy Prince from Northgate Baptist Church here to lead us in indication and pledge.
Mayor, councilors, let's all stand please. Our pledge to our flag, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray please. Father, we come to you in the name of Christ, our Savior, your son, thanking you, Lord, for your goodness and grace. I pray tonight that you would give the mayor and the councilors the wisdom that they need to tend to the business of this good city, Lord, and that you would just bless them with that wisdom. And Lord, we just thank you for all that you're doing for us here in this city. And just you're so good to us in the name of Christ, we pray, amen.
Thank you. Corge, color roll please.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Pritchard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. Just quickly before we get started, it's about three minutes after six. If you haven't voted yet, there's still time, go vote, closes at seven. We will begin with recognition and awards. The employer of the month for January 2020 is Kimberly Kelly. In September 2019, Kimberly stepped up to help the water billing office during a time where staff was short, accepted the request to help without hesitation or complaint. When assisting citizens or others, she not only goes above and beyond in helping solve their problems, but often calls and follows up to ensure the issues are taken care of to the standard and satisfaction of those impacted. Kimberly is always polite and treats everyone fairly with the same level of respect. She is very well organized in her role as administrative assistant to numerous departments, including streets, facility maintenance, maintenance, fleet maintenance, landfill, traffic control, airport, and environmental projects. She maintains impeccable records and played a critical role in keeping projects on target when they were short-staffed within their own department. For these reasons, we concur that Kimberly Kelly is deserving of this award. And if you would come down, I've got a few things for you.
Enjoy your day off.
Congratulations, good job.
Thanks.
We are on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents by address counsel regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda, residents must provide their name and address. Counsel requests that comments be limited to five minutes. I don't have anyone signed up for non-agenda items, just Kyle, you're wanting to speak on non-agenda? Or do you want to wait till the fifth? Other than that, if seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. That will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from consent agenda will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of minutes from the January 14th, 2020 regular meeting of McAllister City Council; B, approval of claims for January 22nd, 2020 through February 4th, 2020; C, consider an act upon a request by Bobby Leonardo on behalf of the Italian Festival to partner with them for the rental fee for the use of the McAllister Expo Center for the annual Italian Festival of the amount of $4,700; D, concur with the mayor's reappointments of Justin Few, Tony Corp, Chris Taylor, and Mark Emmons to the planning commission for terms to expire May 31st, 2023; E, consider an act upon indefinitely postponing tort claim filed by David Robinson; F, concur with the mayor's reappointment of Justin Few to the Board of Adjustments Committee for a term to expire March 31st, 2023. Would anybody like anything removed?
B.
B. Anyone else? And then take a motion in a second to approve items A, C, D, E, and F. Motion, Councilman Reed, second Councilman Smith, any discussion? Corge, color roll please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, item B.
Mr. Manager, we chatted about some of these earlier. Can you explain to me, like I was looking through some of these, we did a lot of the street repairs and things like that, like we did some three eights, steel plate, fasten all bolts, we did some G C rentals and stuff, why we don't take those street repairs out of infrastructure or even W M P A or things like that?
Well, and what I tried to explain a little bit earlier was anything that's considered maintenance and ongoing upkeep, we put those more towards the department. Anything that's infrastructure that has permanency to it, that has extended, that has new life when we overlay streets and we do concrete, large concrete panel replacements, those type of things, those go into the infrastructure and come against the infrastructure money, which is a quarter set. So we try to distinguish maintenance from the department, the actual streets department, or whether it could be maintenance from our utilities department because they utilize concrete, they utilize base, they utilize those type of things also. So that's mainly the difference.
Okay. The FEMA insurance, the flood premiums, we've got one that comes out of the general fund and then W M P A. What exactly are we, I mean, is that just flood insurance?
It is flood insurance and it's broken down as to what is part of our utilities department, what is part of just the general fund of the city, okay?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, I'm almost done, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
So I was looking in there too, we pay Main Street, I don't recall how much we give them a year. So it looks like we paid them $1,250 twice out of tourism and then twice out of economic development too, the same amount, is that just?
That's correct, we pay them $2,500 a month or $30,000 a year. We were actually holding a month, they were a month behind on their quarterly report.
Okay.
And in order to get those quarterly reports, which were approved at the last council meeting, we were a month behind, so we're catching up that month behind and catching up with the current month.
Okay. I answered my questions, thank you.
Have a motion by any chance? The motion approved B, is a second. Second Councilman Reed, any further discussion? Corge, color roll please.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to public hearing, all persons interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business shall have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article Two, Section 212B of the city charter. We have two tonight. The first is an ordinance of the city of McAllister, Oklahoma, amending McAllister City Code, Chapter 62, land development, planning, zoning, and subdivisions by creating Section 62-275, medical development overlay, district, and repealing all conflicting ordinances. The second is an ordinance authorized in the city of McAllister, Oklahoma, to submit to the registered voters of said city whether the excise tax levied upon the gross proceeds or gross receipts derived from the grant from occupancy from hotel motel rooms shall be increased from 6% to 8%. Take a motion in a second to open the public hearings, motion, Councilman Smith, second Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corge, color roll please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and we are now in public hearing, if anyone would like to address us concerning the medical overlay, step forward, seeing no one, if anyone would like to address us concerning the hotel motel tax, step forward. It'll be on five still, yeah. Seeing no one, I take a motion in second to close public hearing, motion, Councilman Reed, second Councilman Smith, any discussion? Corge, color roll please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, we're on to agenda item number one, presentation and update on the McAllister Expo Center, Mr. Sumner.
Is that a PowerPoint?
Yes, James is getting it loaded up now for us. Mr. Stasiak, mayor and council, thank you for your time and attention this evening. My name is Billy Sumner, I'm the director of tourism and the manager of the Expo Center. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the McAllister Expo Center. A lot of information and questions have been floating around lately, and I feel it's best that we come together tonight and address the big question that keeps getting asked, which is, is the expo important? The simple answer I have for you is absolutely. But let's not take my word for it, I'd like to bring you some facts, figures, and information tonight about the expo. So obviously, why is the expo important? There's quite a few reasons before I want to mainly focus on is one, economic impact that the expo has on the city of McAllister, the quality of life, the function of the expo itself, and also the size. What you see here is a graph that was done by Dean Runyon Associates, which did a visitor study for the Oklahoma Tourism Department and broke down the travel impacts and visitor volumes for tourism. It even went so far as to break down the data for each county. This graph shows the data for Pittsburgh County from 2010 to 2018. Now, I will apologize in your packets, you do have a different graph, as well as some different numbers that we'll talk about on the next slide. And the reason for that was I was contacted by the State Department with an updated graph and information that does include 2018 numbers. And they also kind of gave a little more insight on how to better read this and some of the numbers that we should be using. So one of the things for you to first understand is if you look around the visitor spending, which is around the third line going down, you'll see overnight and day numbers as well on there. This is in dollars for each of the years of what they consider the overnight spending per visitor or the day spending. Now, the overnight visitors, we should be looking at the average overnight spending down towards the bottom, which will say per person trip. And that actually includes everything from hotel stays to gas to lodging to shopping, food, everything. So those are the numbers that we should be looking at. So first to tell you, we actually have a average yearly expo attendance of 71,169 visitors. If we would take that average visitor and break that down into day visitors, spending between that 2010 to 2018 numbers, they're getting an average of day visitors spending around $25.68 a day per person. Overnight visitors are averaging around $167.30. Again, keep in mind that does include hotel stays, gas, shopping, et cetera. Looking at those numbers, we kind of estimate that three-fourths of that 71,000 visitors are actually from around Pittsburgh County and surrounding areas, or 53,377 attendees. If you were to take the number of attendees to the expo and times it by the number that the Dean Runyon Associates come up for day visitors, that's a total impact of $1.37 million. Same thing for overnight visitors, the other quarter are travelers and tourists from outside the area that do stay in our hotels, or 17,792 attendees with a total impact of 2.98 million. What this equals out to be is an overall economic impact generated of $4.35 million that the expo brings into our community yearly. Now, also that equates into roughly $163,000 in sales tax revenue for the city. The next aspect to talk about on the expo is the quality of life. The expo hosts multiple and varied types of events for all groups, ages, organizations, carnivals, rodeos, gun shows, craft fairs, music festivals, banquets, vendor shows, meetings, car shows. There's a ton of things lifted there, listed there, including unfortunately, we even have hosted funerals. It is a large center that does bring a variety of different avenues and open up areas for our community. It enhances our community and gives residents and visitors a reason to step outside and interact with each other, engage in our community, attend events. Anything that goes on at the expo does promote McAllister in a positive light as well too, whether it be through ads, media sources on social media, everything promotes McAllister when it has to do with the expo. It's affordable and cheap entertainment. Some of our citizens may not be able to travel outside the area due to larger expenses to go to larger shows. So the shows that do come into the expo may be the only time that our children get a chance to see a circus. The Shrine Circus gives out free tickets every year to the school system, to the students to come experience. That may be the time that they get a chance to see an elephant or be able to see a tiger. They may not have the means to travel outside and see some of those in larger areas. It provides overall enjoyment and excitement, which is obvious when it comes up to the events that we do host from time to time. The function of the expo as well is another highlight that I want to bring aboard. A lot of events decide to use the expo because we are a full event setup. The staff at the expo does the full tables, chairs. If you want to dance floor stage, if you want to use the kitchen, we make sure all of that is available for you. So we take care of all the initial setup for events. We also take care of all the in-house cleanup, so once your event is over, what you bring in, you take out, we take care of the rest. Obviously, a friendly, helpful staff, we want to make sure that we have somebody there at all events. We try as much as we can to help any event holder if something changes, or if they have something that comes up last minute that we can help take care of it and make sure that their event is a success. We do allow alcohol, we are one of the only facilities in town, there are a few others that do allow that as well too, but for our size, we do allow alcohol at events with the proper permits. And we have multiple sized rooms which allow for varied events and setups. Speaking of the size, you can see some of the different sizes of rooms and stuff we offer at the expo. Overall, it is an 80,000 square foot facility, so quite large with a 50,000 square foot expo hall. Room 103, which is typically used as the big banquet room, is around 11,000 square feet. Room 101, 3,700, and then the rest of them break down into some of our upstairs rooms, as well as kitchens, both up and downstairs. The expo again hosts a ton of different events for all different organizations and the community. These are some of the events that we host for the kids and for the school systems. A C T testing, we partnered with Savannah and Epic as well too, to do different A C testing, A C T testing throughout the year. Kids Fair, Shrine Circus, Pittsburgh County Free Fair, 4-H Banquets, Christmas programs. The numbers you see here are also the average attendees that these events are bringing in. Now, this is not all the events, these are just some of the larger ones that I wanted to highlight to you as well. Besides school, we do have community events as well too. You can see the rodeo, which is actually coming up this weekend, the Italian Festival, gun shows, and they come multiple times throughout the year, monster trucks, casting crowns, other concerts, Two Hip Chicks Roadshow, which is craft shows. Again, all the different numbers and attendees there that actually do attend these shows as well. And last, we have a large group of other partners that also use the expo as well. Relay for Life Bingo, Carrying Hands, the Choctaw Nation for their powwows and different campaigns, Boys and Girls Club, Chamber of Commerce, Shared Blessings, Catalans Association, Choctaw Fall Festival, Life Church Dinner, Child Abuse Prevention. We also partner a lot with different programs through a hospital and also the library. We also work to bring in new events. These are just some of the new events that we have brought in over the past few years. Again, we've had multiple circuses, typically we have the Shrine Circus, but we have brought in a few others as well. Multiple concerts, Casting Crowns, Marty Haggard, Gather and Grow Conference that we partnered with O S U Extension on, Gypsy Glam Roadshow, which is craft shows, artifact shows that paired up with another one of our shows, which was a coin show. Youth Wrestling from McAllister Youth Wrestling Association had a tournament there recently. CrossFit competitions, we're constantly looking for different partnerships and other new events that we can bring in. We've had other musical concerts, Night Out with the Nurses, which had five of the American auto performers that was put on through the hospital. And we're definitely working with our current events as well too, to make sure that we expand and bring more to their events, especially events, large ones like the Italian Festival and the Free Fair. There are actually over 200 events yearly that are held out at the expo. Now, a lot of people will say too that, well, some of these events can be held in other places. So these are a few of the facilities that events could be held at. We have a great number of multitude of events, event centers and places to hold events across the city. Al Horton Center, no alcohol allowed, basketball courts, round tables, but only 120 people seating. That becomes a hindrance to some of the events. Kaemichtech Eastern, you can see the different things they offer there. Again, those three facilities, no alcohol is allowed, so a lot of the banquets that do want that at their events would not be able to hold an event there unless those policies were changed. Also, the maximum seating at most of those is 120, while most of our banquets are well over 200 to 300 people. Couple other, the Grand Event Center, the Venue and the Mansion, these three facilities do allow alcohol. Again, a little bit bigger in some of the size, they do offer up to 200 people. But again, the big thing to think about on the expo is not only just the size and amount of people needed, but these events that hold these banquets at our facility also have a lot of times use of the dance floor, the stage, food areas, silent auction areas, so they need a lot more than just enough space for tables and chairs. So the big question to come up with as well too is if events are not being held at the expo, then where would we put them? And unfortunately, I couldn't honestly tell you any place that we would be able to do these. So I challenge you to really look at the expo for what it is. It is more than just a building, the expo is a needed asset for our community. It is used by and supports not only the schools, youth, and nonprofit organizations, but the community as a whole. It is a vital tool for our tourism industry and a direct benefit and effect to the hotel and motels in our area, which are the entire source of funding for the expo and McAllister's tourism department. Yes, on paper, the expo may lose 360,000 a year, but what it brings into this community is much, much more. 4.35 million in economic impact to the community as a whole, 163,000 in sales tax revenue for the city, an increase in quality of life for our residents, an added attraction for visitors and residents, priceless experiences, entertainment, and joy for our visitors, a positive promotion for our city, a large event center that can support multiple organizations and events from schools to community-wide, a partnership with numerous nonprofit organization and event holders that rely on the expo for large fundraising events, banquets and ceremonies, and a direct impact and drive for the hotels and motels in McAllister who directly fund the expo. So if we don't fund and support the expo together, we risk losing a whole lot more than what we gain.
All right, any questions or comments? Councilwoman Harrison?
Thank you and your staff for what you're doing to work on this expo. Got a quick, several quick questions, I guess. What's the difference between an attendee and a visitor?
Attendee is just overall, it's kind of the same word, honestly, I use two different ones. And there are attendees, of course, the ones that come to the expo, visitors, the same thing. But in the tourism industry, a lot of times we'll say visitor is those from out of town as well too.
Oh, okay. And then also, on this, looking at, on page, do you have page 413? Okay. Could you tell us about this 80,000, wait a minute, I'm sorry, down here. The budget is 100, 110,000, I'm sorry, $110,000 for capital improvements at the expo. Minus the capital improvements, the tourism transfer would only be 357,623, could you tell us what that means?
Yes, I mean, the expo is funded through the hotel motel tax coming directly out of tourism. So anything that we bring in revenue wise at the expo from our room rentals and our concessions is the revenue that we generate from the expo itself. Anything that we need to continue to bring the expo up to speed comes from that hotel motel tax and a transfer from the tourism department. So this year, we had budgeted for about $110,000 of capital improvements that we wanted to make improving parts of the facility out there. And so I was just showing that besides that, if we had not made those extra improvements, how much the tourism transfer would be compared to previous years where those same improvements were not made.
Oh, okay. Is it okay to ask? All right, on page five of 13, please. Could you tell us about fans, it's my understanding that you don't have the air out there that you need, air conditioning and heat, and fans would be $10,000 each and that you would need at least four?
Yes, and sure, in our expo hall, which is the 50,000 square foot facility where like our rodeo is held this weekend, some of our larger shows are held, the circus, that part of the facility is not air conditioned at all. It does have some heating, but it has no air conditioning. So from pretty much mid-May through September, we cannot use that part of the facility because of the heat. If we were able to find a way to either air condition or bring in a little more air movement in that part of the facility, we would be able to open up the expo more months in the summer, which hopefully we could bring more events to it as well. One of the ideas we looked at was bringing in large industrial fans. And what my hope would be is to put one over each of the bleacher sections, so there are four sections of bleachers there. And each one of those fans, from talking to the company that I was looking at, they believe it would increase the airflow and be able to allow us more capacity to open up during the summer months.
So right now, your biggest need is a boiler, I guess, for?
For sure, yes.
And that would only help with heat?
It does have some function with our air conditioning as well, yes.
A little bit there, okay. And lastly, I think, all right, on the spaces that are room that are rented out, is there any way that they could be made into the sort of livable, where people could actually stay there and not have to come into town? Some people like to be in the country, so is that possible to make any of them into a livable space? And I don't mean to stay, to camp forever, but maybe a couple of nights or something, so they wouldn't have, and the funds would still go to hotel motel, correct?
Not anything we've ever considered, but I mean, I guess some could be possible. One of the benefits we do offer is we do have R V spots outside the expo. So we do have that available to anyone coming in that would like to use those.
So no thought has been thinking about maybe making something, being creative and letting people actually rent?
Not at this time, but we could always look into something on that, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess I'll weigh in. Just some questions for you.
Sure.
So looking through the numbers and everything that you've put together here, why do you feel like the number of people is trending downward that's actually going to the expo events?
The most recent numbers, I believe, honestly, were when we upped the rates at the expo for the rooms. I expected that when we did. I know it was something that we definitely needed to do to help bring in more revenue, but there's always a little bit of a backlash from time to time on that. We've been seeing those numbers definitely trend back, including our revenue since that has happened. So I'm positive those numbers are going to continue to increase again.
So what do you think the average attendance, what do you think the attendance will be this year?
This year, we were probably hit probably closer around 60,000 on that one, maybe a little bit more. I honestly couldn't tell you, that's just a guesstimate at my point at this.
So my question then, so we raised rates and was it 17, 18? Okay, and that cut us down by 15,000 people a year approximately?
It did on some of those, yeah, we lost a few of our bigger events that decided that they couldn't afford to come in and rent the expo hall itself and still be able to function in under their events.
Okay. Why is the concession so low this year compared to some of the past years so far, or am I just reading that wrong?
No, it is low this year, we did have to, we had the basketball tournament, the pit eight that decided last year not to come into this year, so we were expecting that. And then there were issues with the flooring that happened for the First National Bank Classic. So we lost two of our basketball tournaments this year due to just issues that came up, but we do expect the First National Bank, we hope for them to come back again.
Okay, that was going to be one of my questions.
Sure.
We lost those two basketball tournaments this year?
We did, yes.
Are they, I mean, I feel like pit eight's probably not coming back.
The pit eight, we knew because of the new hearts sworn facility, and they had worked with the school system on they wanted cuts of the concession. So that was something that we got full concession rights out at the expo for those event, and we did quite well in concessions. I mean, the numbers were very, very good for those kind of events. So the schools wanted a piece of that, and so they decided to move the tournament to newer facilities and then also get cuts of that from the schools.
I know recently, we just took in the Okla with doing their remodel on it potentially and opening that up. Do you see that as a competitor for the Expo Center?
I don't, just like all the other, the rest of the venues in town, I believe everyone has their own niche of what they're looking for and what they need. The Okla is going to be more of a smaller function event that is going to be more for meetings and public and community type events. The expo, I still see for those larger events, that is my goal, is to have those bigger, larger events that come out there.
So like the A C T workshops and everything like that, you don't see any potential of that?
No.
Expo Center?
I really don't think so, I mean, honestly, maybe Savannah, they have usually, you know, a couple hundred that might come in for theirs, but the like Epic Charter Schools, they're one of our big runners coming up this year. They have a month and a half booked out at the expo where they're using multiple rooms upstairs and downstairs. There's no way they could function in a sized facility like the Okla.
Okay. And bluntly, with the large deficit that running at the expo, do you really think it's wise for us to stick on the expo and the Okla?
I do.
Okay, do you think that they're going to be competitive in the sense that they're going to compete for the budget that you guys function with now?
I don't, I think we'll be able to separate that equally to where we feel like it's going to impact the most. So I'm confident that we can make both those facilities work.
Okay. And the deficit that you've got projected here in the budget of the 467, 623, with the $110,000 taken the capital improvements out, I know that's what we've got budgeted, but isn't on track to beat that this year? Or is it going to be less since we've lost facility, like since we've lost some of the events, like the basketball tournament and things like?
No, we've also Now, we've also been cutting down on some costs, and unfortunately, you know, when you have no heat with the boiler system, that definitely saved us a lot on gas bills. So there are things that do offset on there as well, too. But no, we're looking to still be right on track for that from what I can estimate.
Councilman Pritchard?
I want to talk about your estimate of the economic impact. I know you, I got lost when you were talking about why your numbers, why the number in the handout is different than the number you presented. Can you go back over that for me?
Yeah, the handout that I gave you guys within the council packet, I guess, was an older one that the Oklahoma Tourism Industry had. So they updated me with one that included two thousand and eighteen numbers. And I was going directly off of just the overnight and day spending up at the top, which I highlighted for you guys in your packet. But they told me for overnight visitors, the average overnight spending per person trip towards the bottom is the number we really should be looking at, because that number includes not only just their average spending, but their hotels, their gas, their food, everything in general on that one.
So the number, I'm sorry, which, you're looking at the overnight visitor?
Per person trip, which is right, almost at the very bottom.
Yeah. So why is that number so much higher than the one above it? I mean, it's more than double.
Like I said, for whatever reason, the way they calculated this study, they said that one includes everything that we look for in the tourism industry for an overnight visitor. So they said anything that we're going off the numbers is to go off of that one.
You also said, after that, I think you said that the city collects, maybe you said a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in sales tax? How did you arrive at that number?
I took the overall economic impact and buy our three point seven-five percent that we get on sales tax.
So are you suggesting that that total economic impact occurs within the McAllister City Limits?
Per this study and the numbers, that is what all the average visitors coming in, the money that they spend going back into the community throughout all avenues.
When you say community, you mean the McAllister City Limits? What, of the sixty thousand people, sixty-five thousand people that are going to attend the expo, events at the expo this year, what percentage of those events, of those attendees, do you think could happen at events at other facilities around town?
Again, there are going to be some. The ones that I listed on there are larger ones. So again, looking at the different facilities and venues around town, anything that's going to have more than two hundred people at a banquet-style event can't be held in other facilities.
So what percentage of that?
I would have to get that for you. I honestly couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay, I have a question about, you talked about the Al Horton Center, which is the, what I call the new Boys?
Boys and Girls Club, yes.
It's been new for, I don't know, ten, fifteen years now. How many people do you think that facility can accommodate?
We called and talked to them, and they only have enough tables and chairs for a hundred and twenty people. So they're typically not in that type of rental venue for it.
What if they did have more tables and chairs? How much, how many people do you think that?
I couldn't tell you.
You really couldn't tell me?
I mean, it's probably roughly about thirty to forty thousand, so they're going to probably be able to hold roughly about the size that we could in room one oh three. But again, that facility also does not allow alcohol, which is what a lot of our banquets look for as well.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison?
When you're factoring into the expo, you're also including trailers and things like that where these other facilities wouldn't have accommodations for trailers and animals and all. So that's one of the things that is a plus out there.
It is. We have definitely the parking and space that is adequate for those type of things to come in on bigger shows or events. You wouldn't be able to put, I know it's been suggested bringing the Italian Festival to Chatty Park. There's no way you'd be able to have the parking at that kind of facility for that type of festival.
Or circus or zoo or?
Correct.
And on page, thank you, thirteen of thirteen, there's a statement that's on here. Okay. Where it says on here, the decision to close the expo or turn it back over to the county is not the best course of action. Could you give us a synopsis of that statement?
Well, obviously, again, if we were to lose the expo for the city, we would lose the economic impact, the events, the partnerships, everything that we currently have. I don't think that's wise for us to not support those type of community activities. I think there are ways that we can look at other things that would hopefully benefit the expo and the community as well to help close that gap a little more.
So there's no funding or anything from the county at all? It's all?
There is not.
City from the motel, hotel?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Sumner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to agenda item number two, consider an act upon accepting the bid amount of fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, fifteen cents from Atlantic Fabrication and Design LLC, authorizing the mayor to sign the notice of award for the new boiler for Southeast Expo Center. Mr. Sumner, I thank you too soon.
It is me again, yes. As you can see, council, we had an issue with our boiler that it went out. And so we are requesting that you accept a bid from Atlantic Fabrication to put in a new boiler system. We had, we did look at trying to repair the current boiler, which unfortunately, with the age of that boiler, it was built in nineteen ninety-six. Typical boilers will last anywhere between ten to fifteen years. So this one has definitely gotten quite the use out of it. Unfortunately, to repair that would be anywhere between fifteen to twenty thousand dollars because of the aging parts of the system. So our hope was to eliminate that, eliminate a rising gas bill due to a faulty boiler and also maintenance costs. So we're asking you to approve this and help us get a new boiler.
Any questions or comments?
I have one question. Go ahead. Where are we taking this money out of?
This comes out of our capital accounts, and it's budgeted every year.
Okay, why would we take it out of the expo or tourism?
It probably comes out of the capital on the expo side.
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, it would come out of that hundred and ten thousand that we had already talked about.
So we would additionally put in another fifty-eight thousand if this gets approved?
No, yeah.
Go ahead.
Let's say, from what we had talked about, we were just going to work on making sure we had this boiler and look at other projects in the future.
So this boiler was in, am I misunderstanding? Tell me if I am. So this boiler was in what we approved with our budget already?
It was not.
So we?
It failed after the budget was completed.
Okay, so it would be an additional fifty-eight thousand in capital improvements?
Potentially. What we're talking about is we have a hundred and ten thousand dollars in the account. This is roughly sixty thousand dollars, leaves us with fifty. We'll see what the necessary capital requirements are with the remaining fifty thousand. If we have, if we fall short with what we have planned, then we'll come back to this council and ask for additional funding at that point.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Take a motion in a second to approve motion, Councilman Smith, second Councilman Reed. Any further discussion? Court Cholero, please.
Councilman Smith? Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
No.
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
No, thank you. We're on to agenda item number three, consider an act upon an ordinance amending chapter sixty-two and development code of McAllister City Code by creating section sixty-two dash two seven five, medical development overlay district, repealing all conflicting ordinances and declaring an emergency. Ms. Clifton?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a district that the planning commission had reviewed. And as you can see from the information included in your packet, there's the draft ordinance, a few maps that depict the area, the boundaries, the zoning that's there, and also a staff report that kind of describes where the areas in the comprehensive plan that made recommendations to something such as this. So this is in addition to the regulations and the permitted uses of the underlying zoning. And this will allow for a concentration of medical facilities and related limited commercial and retail uses and a mix of complementary uses around the hospital in a campus-like setting. The planning commission met January twenty-first, twenty twenty, and voted unanimously to recommend this draft ordinance and staff recommends the approval.
Will this take care of Ms. Brooks' problem?
Perhaps, yes.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments? Councilman Pritchard?
She has went before the planning commission and the council to put in a beauty salon or wig shop. She does make wigs for cancer patients, and so she is within the boundaries of this district. And so she will be coming forward with a use permit application before the planning commission and council.
Councilwoman Harrison?
In other words, she's going to be able to be within this?
She will be able to apply.
She'll be able to apply.
And the planning commission and council will have to consider that application.
Okay, thank you. My question is on three of three. Page three, please.
Okay.
Again, thank you for your work here. All right, could you explain in simple terms for those of us that don't know this high-tech terminology? When it talks about pharmacies and connectivity through drive-in windows and things of that nature, could you expound on that force, please?
I'm trying to find what you're?
All right, let's see. You know, there's the whole paragraph, it's probably the last sentence, Mrs. Clifton. It had on here that. Well, anyway, it talks about a chairman, he closed the meeting and called for motion, and then the commissioner motioned to approve the medical overlay district ordinance upon suggested changes to pedestrian connectivity and drive-through windows. What does that say?
There was some recommendations by some of the commission that they wanted to see some changes to the draft ordinance that I presented to them. One of those was instead of making the connectivity an option, that they wanted the language change that it shall be included so that it was a requirement. And then there was, let's see, what were the other ones? Drive-through windows, we had a stipulation that there could not be drive-through windows, and they wanted that removed because they felt that that may impact pharmacies being able to locate in that area. It was initially included in the draft to kind of avoid fast food chains going in there and causing traffic congestion with drive-through lanes. We have some along Carl Albert Parkway that cause some traffic concerns. And so with Strong being, you know, kind of a high-traffic area, it was an idea to include that in there. However, the planning commission wanted that removed, so we took that out.
So are you, you think there's going to be some pharmacies that are wanting to look in?
There could be. I mean, it's allowed, it's a permitted use under this ordinance. So, you know, someone wanted to open, maybe a local pharmacy wanted to move closer to the hospital or another pharmacy wanted to open in the area, they could do that.
Now, does this area, just to get a picture of this, I looked at the map, we're talking about Strong Boulevard where the hospital is, Monroe, and how far, how far north and how far west are we talking?
If you look at the maps that are included, the red boundary line shows the area. It goes as far north as Fillmore Avenue, and then it jogs south and includes Monroe Avenue. The north side of Monroe, entire blocks, and then just half blocks for the far west part of Monroe, and then half blocks on the south side of Monroe. But it extends Monroe Avenue and Monroe also, when you cross Strong, it turns into College. And so we included parts of College Avenue in there as well. There's quite a bit of vacant property over there with, you know, some potential of development.
And everything is fine with the health department, Pittsburgh County Health Department, there's no problem with that?
We have not heard anything from them. We did our notices by publication, not directly by mail. Usually, in ordinance of this magnitude, this large area, we usually do the publications.
All right, and none of the residents seem to have any problems with this?
We have not heard anything.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Reed. Second, Councilman Smith, any discussion? Court Cholero, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and motion carries.
Thank you, council.
We're on to agenda item number four, discussion and possible action on approval of certain costs related to the fire department funds to be used from the city of McAllister, the city of McAllister Fire Department's portion of the quarter set excise tax for fire services. Chief Brewer?
Mayor, council, thank you. We're needing to purchase some bunker gear for our firefighters. We have a quote from Casco Industries, which is actually off of the county's bid list. The amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight, I believe, dollars. We're asking to fund this out of the fire department's portion of the county fire safety tax.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Second, Councilman Smith. Any further discussion? Court Cholero, please.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Sniff?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Mayor, council, thank you.
We are on to agenda item number five, consider an act to approve an ordinance of the code, ordinance for the city of McAllister amending article four hotel, hotel tax, section nine eight dash one one three A, imposition of tax exemptions by increasing the tax percentage from six to eight percent, and authorizing the mayor to submit the proposed changes to the qualified registered voters of the city of McAllister, and consider an act to approve a resolution calling a special election for the purpose of submitting the proposed code changes to the qualified electors of the city and authorizing the issuance of a proclamation for the election regarding the proposition to change the McAllister City Hotel Motel Tax. Mr. Struce?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kyle Spurges, representing the McAllister Chamber of Commerce today. Basically, what I'm here to do today is ask you guys to pause and wait on this, possibly table this matter. There, we've had a lot of our members approach us since this went on the agenda sometime last week with lots of questions, lots of concerns, as far as where are these current tax dollars going, what are they paying for? And then what is the increase actually going to be paying for? Our hotels have approached us, Mr. Freestead, which he wasn't able to be here today. Doug from Valley Inn was another person very concerned with it. And this, this whole topic here really goes beyond just a simple tax. You know, in the community, it's very, like the rest of the country, it's very divided to where everybody's either, let's do this, let's do that. And nobody's agreeing, so what we would like to do is get all the information out on the table, possibly form a group that would consist of the chamber, Mr. Saziac, tourism, economic development, the chamber, of course, and possibly the lead committee, and discuss, you know, what's happening with these tax dollars currently. If we increase this, what kind of impact are we going to see from another increase on our hotels and motels? Before I came, I just Googled just a few quick surrounding cities. I say surrounding, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, and Dallas. Oklahoma City is currently at five point five percent, Tulsa is at five percent, and Dallas is at seven percent. Us sitting at six percent is pretty well aligned with the rest of the state and a very large metropolitan area south of us. Going to eight is putting us above all of those locations. Now, we're not taking a stance today as far as we're against it for it. What we are asking is please table this today, and let's form a small group that can discuss this further and bring that back to the council and see if we can either, maybe we're all in agreeance that this does need to happen, or maybe we're in agreeance that a different type of change needs to happen.
Yeah, the question I would have would be, because this is trying to be set for the general election, so we wouldn't have to call a special election. What's our timeframe on that? Do you, do you know, Cora?
I don't have that with me, but it would be?
Probably sixty days.
So it's still a plenty?
An election is allowed.
I think it's, I think it's actually seventy-five days.
Might be seventy-five now.
Is it's a presidential primary?
Yeah.
So I think it's, I think it's longer for this.
In these years, it's, that's true, it is longer.
You're looking at the middle of March.
So we would have to get it back, we'd have to get on it pretty quick.
And we have no problem doing that.
Anybody have any, Councilman Reed?
I don't have any problem with, with the review. I think it's great anytime citizens want to review how we're spending the money. However, we've already voted to take possession of the, that's an obligation that this council has already taken on. And the council doesn't raise the tax, the voters do. And I, I think they're the ones who will, I mean, they're going to ultimately decide whether or not we want this or not. Personally, I, I believe we should go ahead and get this done. If, you know, the review wants to take place, that's great, but I don't, I don't think we should stop the process in order to do that.
Any, any other, Councilman Brown?
So, Mayor, we gave him his time, say, two weeks. I'm assuming, can you guys have something done? I guess, in two weeks, next meeting, maybe a review done with everyone?
It would have to be the, the next meeting or the first meeting of March in order to make the June.
I see no problem in that happening.
Okay.
I'll just say, even if that can't happen, I mean, we could have an election in November too. You know, the general election's in November, so if we do delay and we can't get the June thirtieth, we could, you know, get it at the November third election as well.
Will you done, Councilman Brown?
Yes, sir. Give me a.
Anyone else? The vice mayor Stevens?
I think that's wise. I think we ought to table it and have a discussion, maybe have a committee that meets with the lead committee, maybe a councilman take the lead on that, or yourself, Mr. Mayor, and do that, because I think at the end of the day, I think Mr. Spruce makes a lot of really good points, but I think for me, especially as a councilman, as in a citizen too, I know that we just took the Oak law on to remodel it and put it into use for the community, but I don't see that anywhere in this language. You know, if that's the intentions, why should, it should be in here to some degree, or maybe we should have a better plan in place if we're going to vote that through. So I would be strongly in support of tabling it for a time, and maybe even establishing a committee, like we said, and talk through this and come up with a plan that maybe the citizens, we can present it, and it would be supportive of maybe a couple of different options, not just the Oak law, but actually using that fund that could be generated if we decide to go forward with it. It can maybe be generated for a couple of different distinct groups in our community.
Councilwoman Harrison?
I'm in agreement with it being tabled so that there'd be more input from all those that are, that have interest.
I've heard of a lot of advice, but no motion. There are motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that you appoint a councilman to work with the chamber, the lead committee in tourism, as that person sees fit. Well, I guess, well, if we have to put Mr. Stasiak in, I guess we'll do that as well.
I think he's ex officio.
Unfortunately, okay, we'll put him in there.
Somebody's got to keep it moving forward.
Okay. So we'll, we'll do that and set that up. That way it can be discussed and then presented to the council at the next meeting, or as when that committee sees fit.
Yeah, we'll have to call, in order to get it going for the, the, the June, we should probably call a special meeting of the lead, because it's, the next meeting of it is the first meeting in March, so we will, we can, we can do that, I think.
And Mayor, in order to reach that deadline, we've really only got three weeks to put all of this information together and get the package out for that meeting.
Well, if this passes, then I'll, we'll get Kirk to contact the lead committee and see the quickest I can. Get a quorum there.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, second. Did you get?
Do you want to appoint a councilperson this evening, or would you like to see how these elections go?
Probably re-prudent to see how the elections go. All right, is, the motion is to appoint a councilman to set to meet with the lead committee with the chamber to discuss the future of the, of this two percent.
But also, just to be clear, tourism and Mr. Stasiak to be included in that as well?
Yeah, yeah.
We would also prefer economic development to be in that conversation.
Okay.
He's on the, he's ex officio on the leads, on the leads, so he'll be involved as well.
Yes, second.
Yeah, we'll get the second, okay. Any further discussion? Corrige, Colorado, please.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
No.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, guys. We are on to new business, any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with Section three one one point nine, Title twenty-five Oklahoma State statutes.
We do not, Mayor.
Then we will go to the city manager's report.
Just a couple of updates for you this evening. Our website, as you're aware, we've been building a new website now for several months. We expect that launch to occur in about three weeks, so we're pretty excited about that. It's going to be a big improvement for our communication with the public. Also, two weeks ago, we talked about the condition of the recycling center and the fact that our roll-off truck had been down. We were able to get some parts for that truck. That truck is back in operation, and we're back moving material out of that recycling center to the, to the recycling center in, in Durant. So have a little patience, it will be all cleaned up, and it's occurring very quickly, so that's happening quickly. The other thing that I wanted to talk about just very quickly for more of the general public is, you know, we've got a large area of Wade Watts shut down right now, two lanes shut down, we've got one lane going in each direction, and my, my request is to please slow down in these areas. Okay, we've got large equipment, we've got a lot of personnel, and we're improving the condition of that roadway up there. We've got a lot of damage to those panels. We're going to spend roughly from the top of that hill down to Strong Boulevard about a hundred thousand dollars replacing concrete panels in that section of the road. We're going to be there for quite some time, so please slow down and be cautious around our workers and around all that equipment that's out there at that site. Thank you.
Mark's inquiries by council, Councilman Smith? Vice Mayor Stevens, Councilman Reed? Councilman Brown?
Well, Mayor, I want to say that, again, I enjoy the mayor and council members I get together in Oklahoma City. A lot was talked about finance, I was very impressed, and of course, it always comes up about the tax exemption, and I think that's just, sound like it's a big mess in this state, nobody really, I mean, they have it down, but not really. But there's a great opportunity, and you did a great job on that committee up there, by the way.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harrison?
Well, as most people know, that February is Black History Month. We don't have a proclamation tonight, but there should be one available on, at our next meeting, so I think it's important, if you find out any events or activities that you think you feel comfortable in attending, I would encourage you to do so. May I ask Mr. Stasiak a quick question? Could you tell us the status of what's going on fifth and Washington, the roundabout and the street situation? A lot of people have asked, been asking about that. Do you feel comfortable?
About, talking about a reconstruction project?
Yes, about the, right.
That's, that's a huge improvement for our community. That is an extension of a construction project that was actually started and planned about three or four years ago.
Okay.
Originally, we were to reconstruct Washington from Fifth Street all the way down to Eighth Street.
Did you say A Street?
Eight.
Oh, eight, okay.
Eighth Street. That was one of the last projects that we had of our CIP money. We only had enough money to construct from Sixth Street to Eighth Street. If you remember from Sixth to Eighth on Washington, that pavement had crumbled, it was, we had a large base failure, but that entire project was from Fifth to Eighth, so we decided to go forward with Sixth to Eighth, and we got that reconstructed. Okay? That section that we're looking at right now from Fifth to Sixth has been on the shelf for three or four years, just waiting for funding. Okay, that is, it's an infrastructure project, it's replacing all of the infrastructure underneath those streets. It's expanding, it's moving the parking, the lateral parking that's on Washington, we're actually going to move that three feet closer to the post office and get all those cars that are parked out in the roadway, all those big trucks. Some people drive really big trucks around here, and, and get those out of the roadway and make it a safer transportation mode. In conjunction with that, we had a, so we had this whole project designed, okay? And we knew kind of what it was going to cost, you really don't know until you get it out for bid. We had a private donor, Mike McGowan, come forward and say, you know, I think that a roundabout would work very well at that intersection, asked us what the additional cost would be to put that intersect, put that roundabout, which improves safety at that intersection. The cost was actually fifty-eight thousand dollars is what the engineers came up with. Mr. McGowan wrote the city a check for sixty thousand dollars. It's in the bank, it's deposited, so we added a roundabout on top of a project that was designed three or four years ago.
So what happened to the two thousand? Where'd that go?
I'm sure it's overrun somewhere, Mr. McGowan told us to use it wherever we needed it.
Now, do you, quickly, do you see any real issues or problems with people learning how to drive in a roundabout, because people have really been making inquiries about that? Would you mind?
It's new, it's new. It's not that difficult, I don't know how many people.
Will there be law enforcement there to start it off, because people won't know the first name? So they're just going round and round?
Let me put it, let me put it to you very, let me put it to you very simply. If you're coming up Third Street and you want to make a right-hand turn on Washington, today you come up to Washington, you stop, you look left, you look right, you proceed, okay? When this, when this thing's in, fully functioning and it's constructed, you're going to come up to Washington, you're going to look left, you're going to look right, you don't have to stop, and you can make a right-hand turn.
I've seen that, but I was just wondering about our residents, especially some of the more mature people. So maybe we ought to give a lesson in driving on a roundabout. Right, mature. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry, you know, I'm going to say something.
I'm very familiar with roundabouts, living in Arizona. They function very well, they move traffic very well. They are not difficult by any means. And I think once you go through one, you're kind of going to, going to look at it and go, well, that was pretty simple.
Okay.
So here, here's, here's something.
Citizens, this is more simple than you think.
Well, here's something to kind of keep in mind. We built a very small roundabout at the corner of Choctaw, or at the intersection of Choctaw Avenue and Third. Granted, it was only about three feet wide, but in order to build that Christmas decoration at that intersection, we had to put an obstacle in the middle of that intersection. We had no issues down there for five weeks while that thing was sitting in the middle of that intersection. Were we concerned about it? Absolutely. But the community embraced it and didn't have any problems with it, and no accidents occurred at that intersection. So I'm not anticipating problems.
Wonderful.
Councilwoman Harrison, if it gives you any solace at all, in September, I went to Ireland where they drive very fast, they drive on the wrong side of the road and the wrong side of the car, and I navigated roundabouts without killing anybody, so I think.
We're so glad to hear that. Thank you so much, all right.
Don't forget the French have used roundabouts for decades and decades, and I've been able to do it.
Well, it's a question that I had to ask, because there are a lot of people.
Yeah, there are a lot of, and it's, it's anything new people are apprehensive about, but I, I agree with the city manager, once, once people do it and get used to it, they're actually safer and they keep traffic moving.
I'd like to say one other thing, if I could, dispel one other rumor. The Reba McIntyre statue has never been considered to be put in the, in the middle of that roundabout. Never, ever has it been considered.
You think she'll be disappointed?
People think that we're building that roundabout to put her statue in it, is, that is not the situation. Right, Eddie?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Pritchard?
Question for the city manager. Do you know how many lane miles are in the city?
Hundred and fifty-six lane miles of asphalt and concrete.
You think that's lane miles?
Lane miles.
How wide do you think a lane is?
Average is probably twelve feet.
Thank you.
On to mayor's comments and committee appointments. Wanted to just reiterate a little bit of what Councilman Brown said, that we went to the council of mayors this past week, and we chaired the, the municipal finance committee, and one of the things that we were talking about, and I'm going to be recommended to the legislature, is there's currently a hundred and fifty-two sales tax exemptions in the state of Oklahoma, and they never end. So what, what we came up with to, to recommend was that they all be looked at, if they're approved, they're approved for three years, and some said after three years, they have to be renewed each time. In addition to that, there is the sale for resale that currently is a three-year permit that you get, it costs thirty bucks, but if you go out of business in that first year, many, many people are still using that same permit not to, not to have to pay sales tax when they buy things. So looking at changing that to a yearly, yearly item that they, and they will take the fee away from that. So that's a couple of things that are coming out of that committee that will be something that cities will, will deal with, and some of the other things are the public safety zones where the citizens will be allowed to vote to set tax up to five mils to go to public safety zones to the cities, and that's probably going to be voted on in the legislature in, in the first, first two or three weeks of session. So we had it up last year, and the Speaker of the House, McCall, asked us to, to pull it, to bring it back this year, and they would support it, so there's a very good chance that that would pass. And as, as I said, it wouldn't be, the city just couldn't do it, it would have to go to a vote of the people, and the people said, yes, that five, up to five mils is important to find police and fire. That's, that's the Congress of the mayors, and then I did get, I got a letter from Connie Cooper, actually, we all did. Just wanted to write a note to express my surprise and delight in the Christmas decorations displayed downtown and in the median of Carl Albert Parkway. It was, it was truly a surprise that so much time and effort went into the creation of the scenes and on display downtown during day and night. Whoever had the ideas to be congratulated, also whoever did the constructions of the scenes did an excellent job on their creations. It reminded me of one of our state senators' homes in New Mexico when I was growing up. Mr. Danglades had his whole house and yard outlined in lights. In the yard itself, he had a merry-go-round, a slide, train, tricycle, et cetera, outlined in lights, and working every night from Thanksgiving to New Year's. These were to be put up every year as long as one of his relatives was alive. Two years ago, my sister and I were home for Christmas, and the senator was still working, but several of the pieces were gone. It's important that we have this kind of memories of our fast-paced world, so thank you for the special effort that went into the displays. The only thing I would add to that is, she's, she's thanking the wrong bodies, she should be thanking the city employees, because nearly all of that was their work, so. That, we will recess the council meeting, and I would take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting, confirm action taken on city council agenda, item B, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corrige, Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I'd now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from, excuse me, approval of minutes from the January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting, the McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on city council agenda, item B, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corrige, Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll now reconvene as the city council, and I'd take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed, any discussion?